This conference will now be recorded.
Please enter your access phone, followed by account or hash sign.
Please, please mute. All right, well, no one's saying they have any conflict with gentlemen. Everybody's checked their cell phones. We'll have the adoption of the agenda. We are going to remove item 15, though, which is about the roof. We need to seek some more information on that. We'll bring it up for next month. So with that changed, do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is staff updates. Zach? I'm sorry. I did, I missed that, didn't I? The consent agenda, okay, approval of February minutes, all we have on that. Do I have a motion? Okay, second? All in favor? I marked that off prematurely. Now let's do the staff updates.
All right, so a couple of updates to run through today. This evening, we have the St. Patrick's Day Feet Truck Radio. That's this Thursday, March 17th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. That'll be right out here in the Cape Carteret Community Park and along Dolphin Street, so hopefully we'll get a good turnout at that event. The consultant who we're working with through the Resilient Coastal Communities Program will be onsite to receive comments on flooding issues throughout the town as well as other hazard mitigation concerns. So definitely encourage you to come out and grab a bite to eat, but also to engage with the consultant for that program. That feedback will inform what projects move forward with Phase 3 and 4 of that program. So very important to get that feedback. And if you can't make it out, make sure you fill out the online survey. It's available on the town's website. And want to give a shout out to the Cape Carteret Neighborhood Watch. They had a meeting this past month that was really well attended. They've got another one coming up. And want to thank our friends from Emerald Isle coming over and presenting to the Neighborhood Watch group here in Cape Carteret. And the next meeting is going to take place at 6:00 p.m., March 16th, this week, this Wednesday. It's going to be an ice cream social that'll take place right here in this room, so definitely encourage everybody to come out for that. And we're getting ready to get started on the next section of the trail, which will be there along Taylor Notion Road to connect the library to the Arnoke subdivision, so hopefully we'll be able to hold a ribbon cutting ceremony out there after a couple of weeks of construction work. So excited to be able to move forward on that next phase in the Cape Carteret Trail Project. Want to recognize Barbara and Heather for their work in stuffing Easter eggs every these past couple of weeks. So we're excited to be able to partner with Mac Daddies to hold the largest Easter egg hunt in the town's history at over 10,000 Easter eggs. So definitely something we're looking forward to. That's going to be Saturday, April 9th. We'll have details on that upcoming slide. And then Public Works has been testing a new piece of equipment out throughout the town, so this is just a demo piece of equipment, but they're kind of seeing what the capabilities are of that piece of equipment. It allows them to get into some of the culvert boxes and clean those out. They also have another piece of equipment that's coming this week that they're going to try out that allows them to actually go down the length of the pipes. So hopefully at the April meeting, we'll have a good idea about what combination of equipment will be best suited for what we have here in Cape Carteret. But I want to recognize the Public Works Department. They've been doing a great job getting out there and trying out this new equipment and also clearing out some culvert boxes in the process, which has been great. And then also reminder that the next yard debris pickup starts on March 28th, so all debris should be out by March 27th. And just a reminder that all yard debris should be not bagged, so this is an example of what not to do. So if you've got it bagged, this one's over off Star Hill Drive, make sure you empty it out of the bag so that they're able to safely pick it up. Make sure it's not under power lines. Keep all extra debris out of there and make sure it's safe for the Public Works team to be able to clean it up. And then this is that link to that survey I mentioned. It's on the town's website. It's about the hazard concerns here in Cape Carteret. And once again, here's the information for the Cape Carteret Easter egg hunt, Saturday, April 9th at 11:00 a.m. That'll take place on the Mac Daddy's driving range. So want to take a moment to recognize the Salvation Army as well as West Carteret Water Corporation. West Carteret Water Corporation donated a bunch of boxes of eggs, and I know the Salvation Army is doing so as well. So really a great partnership between Cape Carteret and Mac Daddies, and really excited to see this come to fruition. So with that, I think that's everything I have for now. I know I'll mention one more thing, which, you know, I was speaking with Commissioner Martin earlier this afternoon about the possibility of a community garden over off of the heel lane on that park that's currently been, you know, underutilized or nonutilized, about looking at doing some raised beds that maybe people could reserve and they could have a plot within that space. Wanted to see if there's consensus for the staff to start looking into that, maybe see if we can get some donations to make that possible. And I know we might have some folks from that area here this evening, so if there's any feedback on it, I'll let Commissioner Martin weigh in on that as well. But I think it's a good opportunity, especially with our efforts as a B-City community. We can do some B-City or bee-friendly plantings out there, but also provide an opportunity for residents to be able to reserve, you know, a raised bed in that area. So wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that, and Commissioner Martin has anything else to add to it?
I can remember probably 10 years. I think it would enhance. We're talking about just one lot off the two lots, correct, Zach?
Yes.
Okay. And still in the future, we need to probably look at the potential putting a park facility over there and putting that in the planning board's hands. But yeah, I would be all for giving Zach consensus to, you know, Public Works to move forward, take baby steps with it, see where it goes from there. I don't think it's going to cost anything. But clear it off, do a few improvements, maybe get Lisa Smith from the Water Company and talk to her about a tap over there or something. Yeah, I'd be all for that. I think it would enhance.
Yes, I mean, if there's general consensus to start working on that effort, that's definitely something we can tackle and see if we can get maybe a tap donated, reach out to some of the local businesses, see if there's some opportunities for partnership there.
Are you going to come up with a plan and propose it in a meeting like this, or are you just going to sort of go with it?
I think what we were just talking about conceptually is just, you know, leaving enough space that the mowers can run through for Public Works and then kind of blocking off a space so that, you know, each resident can kind of reserve, you know, a bed, seeing if we could get some of those materials donated, but just kind of starting small and then seeing if there's support and interest for it, then we could kind of scale accordingly.
I got you. Yeah, I'm good with that. I think that's a great idea. I live right down the road from it, so I think we're all ready to see it be something. So yeah, I'm good with it.
All right.
Everybody's good with it, Zach?
Sounds good. Thank you. I'll just add that the Public Works update is printed out. Everybody's got that at their seats. And let's see if Chief's got anything.
I'd just like to personally thank the board for working with the police station and approving the funds for the in-car camera reimbursement grant. I checked this afternoon with ECI. They've been ordered, but the anticipated delivery date is still two to four weeks out. So I'd like to give a special thanks to the maintenance department. They, in the placement of the Neighborhood Watch signs in a very timely manner. So in all the communities in Cape Carteret. So I'm also excited that citizens are stepping up and serving with our new Neighborhood Watch program. They're doing a phenomenal job. And then, of course, the last thing is a reminder of our ice cream social slash meeting, which will be Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. right here in this room, and I'm pleased everyone come out and join us. Thank you.
Next up is the planning board update.
Good evening, everyone. At the March 1st Planning Board meeting, the members were presented with two versions of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Version 1 included the original land use plan that was presented to everyone here at the last Board of Commissioners meeting. It included the walkable Main Street, but Version 1 reorders it so that it does not appear that the Big Four was listed by priority. Version 2 removed all mention of the walkable Main Street and it also removed the words "global climate change." The planning board voted unanimously for Version 1, and here's why. The surveys that we did revealed that 50% of respondents have concerns about increased intensity and frequency of flooding storms. Rising sea levels seem to be undeniable, and for a coastal community to ignore it is reckless. I ask that you not allow partisan hot buttons to impact this plan. This land use plan, after being locally adopted, must be certified by the North Carolina Coastal Resources Commission, which is part of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. It is imprudent to adopt a Kama land use plan that does not address climate change challenges as the state has the North Carolina Climate Change Adaptation Plan, the North Carolina Climate Risk Assessment and Resiliency Plan, and the North Carolina Wildlife Commission Adaptation and Mitigation Measures for Climate Change. If the DEQ thinks climate change is important, then I think we should address it as well. Regarding removing all mentions of the walkable Main Street, there is so much more to this land use plan than one conceptual graphic, and it's unfortunate that it's gotten so much attention to the point that nothing else seems to have been discussed. It has sucked the oxygen out of every discussion when so much more needs the attention of town leadership. A comprehensive land use plan is not just a zoning document, which shows different sections of a particular land, but rather a future vision for how land should be utilized. The benefits of the land use plan are numerous: environmental protection, avoidance of urban sprawl, departure from impacts of transportation, promotion of compatible uses, and public health and safety considerations. For the developer, the main objective of land planning is understanding the local jurisdiction Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which identifies the rudimentary ideas of the distribution, location, and character of future land uses. For the town, the land use plan ensures that resources are used efficiently so that the needs of the people are met while safeguarding future resources. Leaving out the largest undeveloped parcel of land from the plan seems ludicrous. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt Version 1 of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for the Cape Carteret. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions now or during the public hearing. Thank you.
And I didn't check right before the meeting started. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment? All right, so next up is the presentation of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 audit. Is Mr. Green, I guess he's online?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I presume you've got a copy of the audit and my little presentation? And I was going to go over my little presentation here and let you read the audit at your convenience. And with that being said, I presume you got that little presentation? If you'll just flip over to page two. And with it, you will notice that your assets and your deferred outflows of resources exceeded your liabilities and deferred inflows of resources by $3.8 million. And your net position or net income, if you will, increased by $323,853. Now, this is on the full accrual basis with depreciation, et cetera, but this is really not how you keep your books. You keep your book more on a cash basis. But this is the front two statements in the financials. Any questions on that particular graph? If not, flip the page. Your general fund. You'll see your revenues at 2.2 million. Your expenditures at 2.2 million, 29. For your revenues over expenditures of $39,582. As you can see, you were around over $700,000 last year, but this year you're at $39,582. Still positive. With that being said, you look at the next one. Your fund balance available, which this is cash in the bank after you pay all your bills. And as a year-end, a million eight, 875,542. You're a little over a million nine last year. Be down what, about $40,000 from prior year? But you still have a good cash flow. If you take this million eight divided by the prior 2.2 million expenses, you get the next one, the percentage. At year-end, you're at 84.10%. You were at 115 last year. The local government commission probably wants you to be around that 70, 75% because you're close to the ocean, because of hurricanes. But you should be right there where LDC wants you to be to say you're in excellent shape. Any questions on that one? Your general fund appears to be in good shape at June 30. If not, flip the page, just some total numbers that I don't have. Your total cash in the bank at year-end, 2 million 17,830. You were at 2 million 78,000 last year. So you're down what, about 60,000, I mean about 50,000, I mean 60,000, excuse me. Anyway, all this cash. Your long-term debt on the next graph, at year-end, you have 474,000. You were at 431 last year. Most of this is because of your retirement system, the retirement funds. Anyway. The next one, your tax living. The current year, 951,381. You were at 910,671 last year. So you're at what, about almost 41,000 from prior year in the current year tax billing. Any questions on any of those? The next one, your collection rate. You're at 99.22% for the current year taxes. You were at 99.04 last year. This is an excellent rate. The statewide average is around 99%. Anyway, 99.22, that's a good, good collection rate. I'm from the southeast down here in Columbus and Robbins and whatever. We like to get 95 to 96%. You're at 99.22. It's kind of hard to beat that one. But anyway. Any questions on that? That's kind of, it's the highest box that the local government commission looks at.
All right, anybody got any questions? Mr. Green? If not, thank you, sir. We appreciate your work.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up is the Kama Land Use Plan Comprehensive Plan. Presentation, we don't want to go on further here.
Okay, she has a specific presentation. I'll read the memo. And did you have a presentation for this evening, or you just want me to read the memo for this item?
Yes, the memo, I don't know if you can see me. The memo is fine. The plan, Susan described the differences. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. All right, so just want me to run through the memo? All right, so the February 8th, 2022 VOC Special Meeting, the board provided comments to Summit Design and Engineering about the town of Cape Carteret Kama and Comprehensive Plan. Based on the comments that were received during the meeting, Summit made the requested changes to the plan. The board also agreed to provide additional comments in advance of the March VOC meeting. One of the comments that was received was to remove reference to a sound walk. This reference was removed from the draft plan. On Friday, February 25th, staff received additional comments which proposed substantial changes to the draft plan. Based on those comments, a Version 1 and Version 2 of the plan was developed. Version 1 is very similar to the plan that was presented on February 8th to the Board of Commissioners. While substantial changes were made to Version 2, the main changes are summarized in the table. I'll share my screen just so folks can see that. And that's a rundown there. So Version 1, make changes per comments at the February 8th meeting, remove reference to the sound walk and update the legend on the slosh maps. And then Version 2 was make those changes from February 8th, remove the sound walk. And then it also included in Version 2, remove reference to the walkable Main Street, which is on page 23. Remove global climate change will continue to exacerbate these issues. And then that's on page 26, remove two paragraphs about wastewater treatment, which is on page 83. Removed proposed wastewater from map, remove walkable Main Street pages, Town Center concept pages, that was page 84. Remove Appendix F, which is Main Street slash Town Center concept, and then update the legend on the slosh maps. So those were the primary differences between Version 1 and Version 2. And then the planning board recommendation was at the March 1st, 2022 Planning Board meeting, the planning board voted for a favorable recommendation of Version 1 of the Kama and Comprehensive Plan to the Board of Commissioners. Five planning board members voted in favor of forwarding a favorable recommendation of Version 1 of the plan. The ETJ representative, who was unable to attend the meeting, texted Chairperson Hall during the meeting to indicate that they were not in favor of the land use plan. And then the requested action this evening is for the Board of Commissioners to consider adopting either Version 1 or Version 2 of the Kama and Comprehensive Plan. And the next step would be to open up a public hearing.
All right. Motion to draw regular meeting into public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. In any public hearing, we did have a stake ballot. You wanted to speak, you would, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm starting. I'd just like to take a personal point here. Walked in, saw how light the gratification, Mayor. I used to keep it very dark so I could sneak out in case gunfire broke out. Okay, thank you for having me here, and I'll be very brief. I come tonight to talk about a couple of things. One, I want to, it's a cautionary tale to Commissioners. And I want to point out, in 2005, I became a young commissioner that got on the sidewalk committee, the newly created one. And one thing led to another, and two times it came for a vote in front of the county commissioners to have a sidewalk. Twice I voted against that. Well, when I became mayor, I thought that I had an obligation to fulfill the job that had been started under other administrations, and I'm sure y'all feel very much the same way. The problem I had with it, I'm not opposed to sidewalks, as I was opposed to no planning and no funding. That was my issue. And that was 15, 16 years ago. I brought that up. And then 10 years after, five years after that, 10 years ago, I brought it up in front of this board and people sitting in the audience that we just weren't ready for a project of this size with the money and lack of planning we did. And here, 15 years later, and hundreds of thousands of dollars later, we still have two miles left to finish the sidewalk. And I contend it was because we never planned it out right to begin with. We said we'll get funding and we'll get donations, we'll get grants. Well, you know, that mentality is kind of the playground for fools. Actually, you got to have the money in hand and projects and grants on the table and donors that have dedicated their time and money to make it a reality. And that didn't happen. I do not want you to make the same mistake. I do not believe that the town center concept needs to be part of land use concept. I think it can be done separately. A fear of a lot of people is it'll become the primary thing this board and other boards do in the future to make it a reality. It's going to take a lot of work because of the money that's going to be involved, infrastructure, getting into the place, building the facilities, making roads. Let's not forget septic, that's also an issue. And so it's going to be a long drawn out endeavor. And I encourage you not to jump into it like we did in the sidewalks. It's not, it's just not feasible to do this without a lot of planning and without money in the bank somewhere that you can count on. We learned, Zach and I traveled a lot of miles studying the town center, Main Street concept in what year, two thousand and seventeen, Zach. We traveled all over the place, and we learned one thing, that we're way behind the times. And the other thing we learned is to get up to date, we're going to have to spend a ton of money, which we did not have then, and we do not have now. We got a nice bank account, the audit was all sweet, but when it really gets down to it, you start building packaging, packaging plants, you start building infrastructure back like it should be, and buildings at this day and time. Okay, thank you. I never did that in my day, so I'll take advantage of it. And we're not prepared for it right now. I just urge you guys, even though it's probably, I, as a land use concept, the steering committee encouraged me to come here too, many members and some Commissioners, because, you know, dreams and ideas and wants are not necessarily needs. This town's got a lot of needs that go very much in, in favor of doing ditch clean out, infrastructure improvement, road improvement, let's not forget, septic. We got it, we got to solve some septic issues in this town pretty soon. And the stormwater runoff, we hadn't even scratched the surface solving that problem. And that's a problem that's got to be solved soon, or we're going to be facing more lawsuits than we can deal with in this town, I believe. I'm surprised it hadn't happened yet. So I just wanted to come before you today, the, the four ideas that the steering committee had a problem with, and Vaughn Branch went into great detail about one of them, about taking public money to finish that sidewalk. I want to caution you, please not, don't do that. Whatever it takes to finish that sidewalk, shouldn't come out of the pockets of our taxpayers, who quite frankly are undecided to this point whether they love sidewalks or not. But it's being used, and we got nine tenths of it built, we might as well finish it. The thing I would caution you mostly about is starting, breaking ground on, on the town center or our main concept. Zach's got a good plan set forward, but the one thing that's missing in all that is a lot of the back study, what we need to do, how much infrastructure, how much money do we need, and it's enormous. The four big ideas that land use says are, first of all, it said four big ideas. Big could be supplanted with expensive. And a second, new ideas, these are just old ideas that have been recycled because we couldn't solve the problems in the past. Good luck if you can. But I want to caution you about putting things in writing that you expect other boards and yourself to live up to in the future. And just a reminder, on every issue that you face, there's no sense of having the shadow of success without substance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe Dave was the only person that had signed up. So with that, I'll understand Logan to come out of the public hearing and back on the grid.
Motion to come.
All right.
Second.
All right, so would anyone like to make a motion on either one of the plans and then have a discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the version number two.
All right, any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
This Main Street concept sounds very appealing as Dave Allen mentioned, but my biggest fear is if this, if it does, if version one passes, that it will shift focus away from more important issues such as stormwater control, infrastructure improvements. And I feel like a land use plan should contain more obtainable goals, not pie in the sky. The people at Summit Engineering and this government know the Main Street concept will never happen because the landowners are against it, period. We've been told by every form of communication, by Ms. Holtz and her family, in no way, shape or form do they support this. And that brings into my mind property owner rights. Who are we to tell people how to use their property? So I'm totally against version one, even though it is appealing. But it is a pie in the sky dream, and it has no place in a land use plan, in my opinion. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion, comments? All right, so we have a motion for the plan number two. And a second, all in favor? All opposed? All right. That motion failed to carry. Someone like to make another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt version one.
All right, is there a second? All right, any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
So, you know, we've had a lot of public hearing about this, we've had a lot of comments, I've talked to a lot of people. I feel like the opposition to this is very concentrated. A lot of the people that I talk to actually like having a, a plan. They like knowing what sort of the goal is in Cape Carteret. I think, I don't think this changes focus on the priorities. I don't think that a town center becomes the number one priority just because it's in a plan. I think we still have the things that we know as a board that we want to address. Furthermore, I don't think this concept plan compels anyone to do anything, specifically not any landowner. I think that I think there's a lot of people saying that it's a pie in the sky. I think there's people saying that it won't work, but no one really knows because it's void of the details that would say that it works or doesn't work. And so we're at sort of a juncture here where you say, well, this is what, an idea that we want, and the next step is to go and do the scientific detail part and figure that out. And I just don't think we're at a point yet where we can say this will or will not work. So lastly, I, I believe that this could probably be one of the biggest economic stimulus packages that Cape Carteret has seen in decades. I think when you look at just the tax collection alone, I think that what it would add would be equivalent to, by my calculations, I came up with about three hundred thousand, which is roughly five to six cents increase that we wouldn't have to do as, as a board or as a town, we would, we would gain in just the, the ad valorem valuation alone. So I, I realize that we're so early in being able to determine that, but I think you have to look at the dollars and cents at what it would do and what it would forecast, and that, that alone is why I support this. That's it.
Any other comments? All right, if not, then we have the motion in the second to approve of the first plan. All in favor? All opposed? Here's three, two. Next up, we have a resolution of appreciation for Representative McElraff. Some of you in the audience may not know, she is very instrumental in obtaining five hundred thousand dollars from the state to go toward our trying to find it. Hold my notes here. Toward our trail. Just as the former Mayor Fowler referenced, you know, that's where it all started with great ideas and, and people were going to just, you know, throw money at it. And we weren't going to have any tax dollars at it, but it, it came to a very sudden halt all of a sudden when the money dried up. And as he says, planning was a lot of that, but you can't go back, you got to go forward. And so with that, she was very nice in getting us this five hundred thousand dollars from the state. And I have it right here. I'll read this to you gentlemen and the people. Says whereas the town of Cape Carteret has been working on the Cape Carteret Trail Project for the past several years, which will enhance mobility, walkability and recreational opportunities in our community, and whereas the town has been working to secure funding through various avenues to fully complete the project, and whereas town officials work closely with House Deputy Majority Whip Representative Pat McElraff through the state budget development process, and Representative McElraff successfully secured five hundred thousand dollars for the Cape Carteret Trail Project, the state budget through session law twenty-twenty-one dash one eighty. And whereas the town of Cape Carteret is grateful for the support, advocacy and public service of Representative McElraff on behalf of North Carolina House District thirteen. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Cape Carteret expresses its genuine appreciation and gratitude to Representative, excuse me, to Representative Pat McElraff for securing funding for the Cape Carteret Trail Project in session law twenty-twenty-one dash one eighty, which will allow the town to make significant progress toward completing the remaining portions of the Cape Carteret Trail Project adopted this day, fourteenth two thousand and twenty-two. So gentlemen, I want a motion to approve of that. Second. Any comments? All in favor? All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, and we removed the roofing section. So we have consideration of budget amendment twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two point so.
This is a budget amendment to accept the five hundred thousand dollars that were allocated one and dash one eighty. So this is for that next section of the Cape Carteret Trail Project. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the trail segment and stormwater involvement contract amount is for eighty-three thousand, and any wall and handrail contract amount is seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred. So we're asking for your consideration in budget amendment twenty-twenty-one dot twenty-twenty-two dot seven, to reflect that five hundred thousand dollars in our budget so that we can continue progress on the Cape Carteret Trail Project. Have the contract lined up, we just need to, just move the money in place so we can go ahead and break around all this next thing.
All right, no more motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second. Thank you, Charlie. Charlie, second. All in favor? Thanks, gentlemen. And next up is consideration of Piedmont Natural Gas encroachment agreement on Neptune Drive.
All right, so the request actions for the Board of Commissioners to consider authorizing the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to sign the proposed encroachment agreement with Piedmont Natural Gas for an encroachment in the Neptune Drive right-of-way, which will connect a new two-inch natural gas line to the existing two-inch natural gas line located in the right-of-way abutting five fifty Neptune Drive. The new line will cross under Neptune Drive to the southern right-of-way of Neptune Drive, then travel west along the southern right-of-way of Neptune Drive to five sixty-seven Neptune Drive. The background info is that Ray Lewis with Piedmont Natural Gas has requested an encroachment agreement to install one thousand twenty-one linear feet of two-inch M D P E natural gas line, which will serve an additional five addition, or five additional residential customers. And so just to restate it, the requested action is to approve the proposed encroachment into the Neptune Drive right-of-way for P and G natural gas. And there's also, let's see, put the map on the screen that shows the location corner.
All right, I have a motion. Okay, I have a second.
I will second.
All right, any discussion?
I don't know.
Not sure, I think they'd already started, maybe more time, I think, probably the next couple of weeks, so.
Any more comments, discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, next up is Commissioner Reports. We'll start with Commissioner Martin. Yeah, Zach, are these new chairs? Okay, they just, maybe I got a different one this time, it's not leaking.
Yes, the public works repainted in here, so I think they probably lose chairs around.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Overby and the town appellate here asked me to pass this along. Saturday, April the twenty-third, nine a.m., they are partnering with Carteret Big Sweep to do a cleanup on Highway fifty-eight. Their goal is to come all the way down to the intersection of twenty-four and fifty-eight. And they're asking for volunteers, anybody who wants to volunteer show up at their town hall at nine a.m. on April the twenty-third. That's all I have. All right? Charlie?
Uh, this is for Zach and, or mostly just for Zach. We did get these on Friday. I appreciate that. However, the planning board met several days before that, so I think we need to increase our communication back and forth. I'd appreciate it, and I'm sure the other Commissioners appreciate it. If we get something that the planning board approved, we'd get it out a little sooner. It would give us a little more time to take a look at it, not have to wonder what's going on. So again.
Yeah, I can send, because I, sometimes the memos are down a little bit before the entire packet comes together, so if it's something that the planning board has acted on, I can send that memo along, that would be helpful.
I would appreciate it. I think that that would give us a, like, we don't need to wait till the packet's done for us to be able to wrap our heads around one agenda item. You know what I'm saying?
That'll work, so, yeah, I can send along as soon as I churn it out and everybody can start looking at it.
Thanks.
Commissioner Waters?
Couple of things, I know that Zach, there's been the opportunity or possibility of some grants coming forward, and one of them that was discussed was that part of the grant, I believe is a fifty-fifty.
All right, although we haven't brought that up in the discussion yet. I feel like
I, and we, although we haven't brought that up in the U N yet, I feel like on that are five hundred thousand dollars that we were just successful in getting through Representative McElraff and through the budget. I don't think I would want to support using more public funds for this trail. I think that money, it may not finish it, but it will do a good job of finishing, and I think we should focus on that. And the other thing that came out a few days ago, another issue is coming up that parking collection. We're under contract. We wasting, I don't know, we got a parking now. Pay them to pick up one can for residents. I understand there's some people that pick out more than one can. I don't think that Ryan or anybody else, any other employee, used to be spending their time driving around town, trying to trash can, trying to trash can. The F L knows what the contract is, we contracted them to pick up one can for residents. Some people that on their own are paying for two or three cans or whatever, and they know who that is. I don't think they need us calling and asking them as this person. You know, until they come to us and say, hey, there's a problem with the contract, we contracted this and we've got two cans. I don't think you need to be, my personal feeling is if my neighbor puts out two cans and he or she's loving that, more power. I don't, you know, but if G F L, they start complaining about it, then I think that's what our response should be. Our contract is, yes, you pick up one for, you know, one person unless they're paying you for more. I just don't think we need to be having Ryan or anybody else around town, trash cans, unless we're getting complaints from G F L. And again, that would be my, I think that's what our response should be if we do, is you're absolutely right, we contracted you out to pick up one can for residents, that's what you do unless, you know, unless they're paying you for more. So that's, that's just my feeling on it.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, it's not a staff initiated um effort, but there were some concerns that were raised by members of the board of commissioners. Um, so we're just acting on those concerns that were expressed to staff and following up on those. So this weren't, it was not a staff initiated effort, but you know, we're addressing these concerns as they.
I feel if, if we start getting flat from G F L, people that were paying to do it, say, hey, people are putting out too many cans, yeah, then, then we have an issue. But if that's not, if that's not happening.
The G F L probably won't, they probably won't express that there's an issue because the more carts are picking up, the more tonnage they're going to pass along and billing to us. So the more carts they pick up, the more tonnage increases and the more that we get billed. So that they're probably not going to tell us that, that we're overpaying or we're paying more than we were expected to do. Uh, but what I will say, and we're still working on this issue with G F L, but our understanding is that there's supposed to be a pickup that takes place on Fridays. And that's for the second rollout cart. So it can be probably pretty simple for G F L if we just provide the direction, you're just supposed to pick up one cart per household on Mondays and then those second carts are on Fridays. And those are the ones that have the individual contracts with G F L. That would probably clear up the matter, you know, we just provide that direction to them, um, because that's how.
We need to publicize more to the residents. I think a lot of residents may not realize that, they just know their garbage is getting picked up and whatever they have, they pull out there. And maybe that's what we need to get out there is that under our contract, which your tax dollars are paying for, we contract it out, you know, for one can for residents unless you make arrangements with them to pick up more.
Yes, yeah, and I think if we could kind of, we're still waiting on a little bit of clarification from G F L, but I think once we have kind of a full picture of, you know, they, they should have a list over on their end of who they've contracted with. Um, but we're kind of working to see exactly what that list is and how that compares. Um, but ideally, I mean, you know, if they've got a separate pickup scheduled for Fridays, then it should be pretty simple. It should be, you shouldn't see any more than one cart out per household on Mondays. And you should probably see that the trash truck should be coming through on Fridays then if it's operating like it's supposed to. So um, we're working to get some additional information on that, so. But if, if there's consensus to kind of approach it like that.
Friday pickup is only for people that pay for an extra pickup.
Yes, those, those, if you want a second cart, you contract directly with G F L and you pay that monthly fee amount to G F L for the second cart. And then they're supposed to be coming around on Fridays to pick up that second cart location. So um, you know, we can kind of publicize that and get that out there that that's an option. Um, but it would probably make it pretty simple and probably remedy any of the outstanding, you know, issues and concerns if we just say, you know, one cart per household on Mondays. And then, you know, if we get calls saying, you know, why wasn't the second one picked up? You know, provide that information about how to contact G F L to contract for a second cart. But um, yeah, we've just been trying to figure out, uh, and I think when there was some changeover from waste industries to G F L, some of this stuff, there's a little bit of ambiguity to it. Um, so we're just trying to make sure we have a clear picture of that situation, so. That's all I've got.
Just to add to what he's saying, I think we, we probably do need to do some, some, some public awareness on what our policy is. Cause it's like, I had one of my neighbors, I noticed this week he had like two cans, they weren't even the right size can, just bags thrown everywhere. Like they just assumed that, you know, the guy's going to come by and pick all this up. And it's a one-armed bandit, so it's really hard for them to have to get out of trucks, start chunking cans, I mean, the, the bags. So uh, we probably would need to do just letting people know how it exists right now and that it's just a can and don't be just throwing bags out there.
Yeah, I think if there's consensus from the board, um, you know, to just approach it that manner, I think that gives us enough direction at the staff level that, you know, we can, if we see, because we have a list of locations now, we could always send out a letter to those locations and just let them know about what the practice is, about, you know, the second pickup that takes place on Fridays. And then kind of pass it on to G F L that, you know, one cart per household. Um, if, if that's the direction or if there's consensus, that's probably pretty simple, you know, we can get it out there on social media and everything.
It also needs to be put, with a thing on our Facebook page, on the town website. People will look at too, I mean, it's making people aware of what it is, because I, I think there's a lot of people that really don't know. They just know the garbage gets picked up on Monday and whatever they pull out there, you know, that's what they're expecting to get picked up.
Like I remember how you throw it out there, it doesn't matter, they'll, they'll get it, they'll pick it up, but we don't have that base they do to be able to afford that. Exactly.
That is true.
Does G F L know that's how it's supposed to work?
That's coming directly from their operations manager. Um, so that's, I think what we need to make sure is that there's a full understanding within their organization. And then we, once we're sure of that, then we can kind of get the word out, make sure that it's uh, clear for everyone. So um, you know, what we would have to do, if everybody was allowed to have a second car, we would have to be ready to accept that as part of our budget, that, that tonnage is going to increase if everybody's got a second car. Um, that, that's just the main underlying issue is the making sure that's equitable. So if somebody's putting out, you know, one cart and then somebody else is putting out three carts, you know, that additional tonnage cost is getting passed along to everybody else who's not benefiting from that same level of service. So um, it's just making sure we got a full understanding of the situation. But I, we'll make sure on G F L side that, that there is an understanding and once that's in place, we'll make sure it's out there on Facebook, the website, everything else.
When is that contract up?
Uh, it's probably got another four years on it at least, because yeah, it's like a seven-year contract. Yeah, it's within the last two or three years that we renewed it and that's how we got off the new trash carts at that time, so.
Okay, well, if we have a chance to renegotiate, it should look a lot more like a fixed price contract than a, by the ton, I would imagine, we'd do better off that way.
There is a fixed, you know, fixed cost by location, but then the tonnage is passed along because that tonnage fluctuates from month to month. So it's based off of what's actually going out there and being brought to the transfer station, so.
Tipping fees is what kills you. That's right. All right, well, we had another meeting about the fireworks that's going to have July third. It's going to be a massive event, uh, had all the local towns here moving around and both Pelletier, Cedar Point and uh. But I've been real, real happy with how the meetings have gone, just seeing that everybody's sort of pulling together for this event. It's, it's going to be very nice if we can get all logistics and everything pulled together, I think it's going to be very nice for the public. Uh, as everybody knows, the world is on fire right now. And so uh, we've, you haven't gotten gas lately, uh, pull up and you'll see. So naturally, that's going to be uh, something that I do not envy Zach with in the upcoming months, because we're going to be needing to work on our budget for the next year. And it's going to be tough, you know, that's always a tough one to try to figure out is your, your expenditures and your cost and gasoline drives everything. And so it's a trickle up theory when it comes to that, so everything revolves around it. Uh, whether you, whether you're green energy or what, it doesn't matter, you know, that's the cost of doing business and all revolves around fuel. So we're going to see everything going up exponentially in cost and that's going to affect us personally, it's going to affect us as a town. So hopefully we'll be able to weather it, I was uh, very happy with how we came through the pandemic. What a great time to be a mayor, step in the office during a pandemic and now all this, so it's been great. Thanks, man. But we, we, there again, we did the, the land use plan tonight, but I will just say this, while Mrs. Holtz, I have no intention of letting this town or anybody tell you what to do with your property. And so this is, you want to do what you want to with it, and that's uh, that's what it's all about. These are ideas and that's where they'll stay until you decide that that's what you want to do with your property or whatever it is you decide to do. And so uh, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Thank you all for coming tonight, it's great to see people out there.